which was great.[256.58-258.52][S18] We're hearing great reviews from all the students.[258.55-261.52][S18] They liked it a lot more than Gillette.[261.55-263.12][S18] We also had Best Buddy Prom.[263.16-265.36][S18] They had in the cafeteria,[265.39-268.00][S18] which incorporates the special education students[268.03-270.12][S18] through our best buddies club that we had.[270.16-275.44][S18] And that was a few days before, or at least a week before prom.[275.47-277.60][S18] So we had both of those events.[277.63-280.83][S18] When you walked in, you might have seen a bunch of posters[280.87-283.44][S18] hanging all up around the school.[283.47-286.00][S18] We had our senior lunch last week[286.03-288.83][S18] and we got our caps and gowns and whatnot.[288.87-292.36][S18] And they took our pictures and printed out posters[292.39-296.16][S18] and they're all hanging around the school of all the seniors,[296.19-297.44][S18] whether they're heading off to college,[297.47-299.83][S18] the workforce, the military.[299.87-304.16][S18] That's a really great way we got to represent our students,[304.19-306.36][S18] which is awesome.[306.39-309.83][S18] Then next week, we have graduation, senior breakfast,[309.87-312.24][S18] senior walkthroughs, all the fun end of the year stuff[312.27-312.92][S18] that's going on.[312.95-316.36][S18] And something new we're doing is a senior field day this year[316.39-318.12][S18] in lieu of a class trip.[318.16-321.83][S18] We're taking Wednesday, the 31st.[321.87-324.60][S18] We're going to have a field day out on the turf,[324.63-328.52][S18] which is kind of reminiscent of our childhood elementary school,[328.55-330.00][S18] how we kind of wrapped up that,[330.03-334.44][S18] which we thought was something fun and new to do.[334.47-338.84][S18] Just some other things that are going on since our last meeting.[338.87-343.00][S18] The Shrek the Musical was nominated for 25 Ocean State Awards,[343.03-345.84][S18] which is amazing.[345.87-348.00][S18] I know we talked a little bit about the musical last time,[348.03-351.36][S18] but this was a new development since then,[351.39-356.36][S18] which is a really great representation of our theater program here.[356.39-358.72][S18] Our spring sports are wrapping up regular seasons.[358.75-362.84][S18] We're going to start heading into playoffs soon,[362.87-367.84][S18] which is also always good to see, our musical programs[367.87-371.44][S18] and our sports programs doing well.[371.47-372.92][S18] And yeah, that's kind of about it.[372.95-375.44][S18] There's not many complaints going on around the school right now.[375.47-379.24][S18] Everybody's kind of just cruising towards the end of the year.[379.27-384.12][S18] Nothing to really say other than the good stuff going on.[384.16-389.16][S18] But I just want to thank you guys for having me for the last year.[389.19-392.84][S18] I hope that I was able to provide some insight[392.87-397.44][S18] into the minds of teenagers that you're all kind of watching over.[397.47-401.36][S18] And with that being said, I kind of want to pass the torch[401.39-403.60][S18] on to the two people sitting on the side of me.[403.63-408.84][S18] So next year's chair of the Student Advisory Committee is Ryan Viera[408.87-413.84][S18] and our vice chair for when Ryan will not be here is Ally Kettle.[414.84-416.00][S18] So just transition up a little bit.[416.03-416.52][S19] Hello, everyone.[416.55-417.84][S19] My name is Ryan Viera.[417.87-419.84][S19] Again, thank you for having me here today.[419.87-422.92][S19] So I am the Somerset Berkeley sophomore class president.[422.95-426.60][S19] I've been part of the Student Advisory Committee with Mrs. Schoonover[426.63-428.84][S19] since the beginning of my freshman year.[428.87-433.44][S19] Ever since middle school, I enjoyed being involved in student leadership[433.47-436.44][S19] with roles ranging from class president, vice president,[436.47-438.52][S19] and student representative.[438.55-440.12][S19] With this being Abby's last meeting,[440.16-442.00][S19] I would like to say thank you for her bringing[442.03-443.92][S19] the student voice to the school committee[443.95-446.44][S19] and I look forward to representing the Somerset Berkeley[446.47-449.84][S19] student body as their next student representative.[450.84-451.84][S20] I'm Allison Kettle.[451.87-453.44][S20] I'm a sophomore here.[453.47-457.36][S20] I'm a representative for the sophomore student council.[457.39-458.92][S20] This is my first year on student council.[458.95-463.24][S20] I'm also a part of the student advisory meetings with Mr. Schoonover.[463.27-466.84][S20] I'm a part of a few clubs and sports at Somerset,[466.87-470.36][S20] so I could provide some insight into those.[470.39-472.04][S20] And I'm also a school of choice student.[472.07-475.44][S20] I'm from Fall River, so I chose to come to Somerset Berkeley.[475.47-477.84][S20] And I know that's a topic that was recently discussed,[477.87-480.52][S20] so I'd also talk a bit about that.[480.55-481.36][S20] Thank you.[481.39-483.84][S17] Welcome.[483.87-485.84][S17] And thank you.[486.44-487.24][S01] And don't go anywhere.[487.27-490.72][S01] We have something for you in a few minutes.[490.75-491.24][S01] Welcome.[491.27-494.84][S01] Thank you for doing this in this afternoon of school[494.87-497.84][S01] and sports and clubs and getting here.[497.87-500.60][S01] So we appreciate the time that you put in[500.63-503.12][S01] to be a voice for your fellow students.[503.16-506.84][S01] Abby's done an amazing job and we know you will too.[508.44-510.84][S01] Okay, speaking of kids doing amazing jobs,[510.87-515.24][S01] the next item on the agenda is the April Visionaries of the Month.[515.27-520.00][S01] We want to recognize Matia Rose Barth, digital citizen;[520.03-522.24][S01] Emily Bjork, independent;[522.27-527.52][S01] Matthew Carleesi, digital citizen; Sophia Greenwood, academic;[527.55-530.52][S01] Christina Logakis, independent;[530.55-535.24][S01] June Melvin, resilient; Brianna Nye, academic;[535.27-540.36][S01] Avery Petreo, empathetic; and Jordan Theriot, respectful.[540.39-545.44][S01] Congratulations to all of those students who are excellent work.[545.47-552.16][S01] And the next item on the agenda is the 2023-2024 High School Schedule[552.19-554.84][S01] by Dr. Bresser.[562.84-565.24][S21] So I asked to be put on the agenda tonight[565.27-566.84][S21] just to give you an update on the schedule.[566.87-568.72][S21] I've kind of been talking about this the last couple of times[568.75-570.00][S21] that I've been here, but I wanted to[570.03-573.00][S21] just formally review the changes between[573.03-576.16][S21] the schedule this year and the schedule next year.[576.19-578.52][S21] They aren't major changes.[578.55-582.24][S21] They're just some little tweaks that we added.[582.27-585.04][S21] So looking at this, really what we did[585.07-587.24][S21] is we flip flopped Friday and Wednesday.[587.27-593.24][S21] So this year, our Friday schedule had all the long blocks[593.27-596.24][S21] and Wednesday looked like Friday.[596.27-599.24][S21] The rotation's also a bit different.[599.27-601.12][S21] I'll go over that in a second, though.[601.15-602.52][S21] I know I shared this with all of you,[602.55-605.36][S21] so hopefully you had a chance to look it over.[605.39-609.36][S21] But just to hit the highlights of what has really changed.[609.39-612.52][S21] The first change is that we've gone back to three-minute passing periods,[612.55-615.00][S21] which I have to believe for our students[615.03-619.44][S21] is going to be a little bit of a moment for[619.47-621.12][S21] especially our freshmen and sophomores[621.15-622.91][S21] who never lived under the old schedule.[622.95-625.60][S21] But just to put everyone at ease,[625.63-630.36][S21] prior to COVID, we have always had three-minute passing periods[630.39-632.36][S21] since the old building, to be honest.[632.39-633.52][S21] Even when we came to the new building,[633.55-635.00][S21] we stayed with three-minute passing periods.[635.03-637.44][S21] I can make it across the building from one end to the other[637.47-639.52][S21] in three minutes, and I walk incredibly slow,[639.55-641.84][S21] so I know it can be done.[641.87-644.36][S21] But that had always been the case.[644.39-646.60][S21] The only reason we had the five-minute passing periods[646.63-648.36][S21] was purely because of the COVID[648.39-652.04][S21] and you all remember when we were doing the one-way hallways.[652.07-654.36][S21] So that increases our time on learning[654.39-657.24][S21] almost by an entire class period, when you look at it.[657.27-661.24][S21] So that was a positive and it added on to[661.27-666.36][S21] so instead of 50-minute classes, our classes will be 55 minutes apiece.[666.39-669.64][S21] And if I go back to this,[669.67-673.44][S21] you'll notice that first class of the day is 55 minutes.[673.47-677.12][S21] That's because something that our senior student council members[677.15-680.00][S21] asked for this year is to bring back the morning announcements[680.03-681.36][S21] and it is student-led,[681.39-683.64][S21] so the students do the announcements in the morning[683.67-685.24][S21] after the Pledge of Allegiance.[685.27-688.12][S21] So those extra three minutes are[688.15-692.44][S21] so that we can allow that to happen without cutting into class time,[692.47-696.52][S21] so that's where that comes from.[696.55-700.60][S21] We did increase lunch by two minutes, which doesn't sound like a lot,[700.63-703.24][S21] but I think a 25-minute lunch is way better[703.27-704.44][S21] than what we used to have,[704.47-706.36][S21] which I think the shortest lunch we ever had[706.39-708.00][S21] was actually less than 20 minutes.[708.03-709.92][S21] So we have increased lunch a little bit[709.95-713.44][S21] and I think that's important, you know, time,[713.47-718.44][S21] especially to make sure everybody gets lunch, eats lunch,[718.47-721.84][S21] you know, without digestive issues[721.87-724.60][S21] because people are shutting their food down.[724.63-726.04][S21] So we're happy to report that.[726.07-730.24][S21] We moved the Raider Block from Friday and Wednesday, as I said.[730.27-733.84][S21] The next one, if we go back.[733.87-737.16][S21] If you looked at this year's schedule,[737.19-740.12][S21] the way that we have used our vocabulary[740.15-744.44][S21] is we've used blocks, periods 1 through 6 throughout the day.[744.47-746.84][S21] We also had classes 1 through 7.[746.87-748.52][S21] So it would be period 1.[748.55-749.92][S21] Period 1, we rotate.[749.95-753.36][S21] There was also block 1, which is this period right here[753.39-754.92][S21] that stays static.[754.95-758.44][S21] And while everybody to my right totally gets that within a week[758.47-760.72][S21] and it's really not a problem internally,[760.75-763.36][S21] when you talk to parents and families and communities[763.39-767.24][S21] and you say, "Well, you know, Ally's period 1 class."[767.27-769.12][S21] You're like, "Well, is that the first period of the day?"[769.15-772.44][S21] So what we tried to do and what the teachers actually asked for us,[772.47-776.24][S21] can we rename the classes A through F?[776.27-777.52][S21] So that's what we did.[777.55-779.84][S21] It is in Aspen, so the classes will show up[779.87-782.44][S21] when you look and Aspen is A through G.[782.47-785.84][S21] And that's what we're going to start referring to them as,[785.87-791.84][S21] just again, for a little bit of clarity in the vocabulary that we use.[791.87-795.36][S21] We also slightly changed the rotation.[795.39-798.84][S21] If you do look at this year's schedule versus last year's schedule,[798.87-804.84][S21] there is a slight rotation change in the way that we do classes.[804.87-806.84][S21] This again came from the scheduling committee.[806.87-810.36][S21] This did not come from me or from the administration.[810.39-815.00][S21] We had a scheduling committee that has met faithfully all year long.[815.03-818.44][S21] They will continue to meet next year,[818.47-820.12][S21] the year after.[820.15-822.60][S21] They are the ones that it's kind of grassroots.[822.63-823.92][S21] It comes to me.[823.95-826.44][S21] They provided us with a few different iterations[826.47-828.36][S21] of what they suggested as schedules,[828.39-831.36][S21] not only for this, but they do our half-day schedules[831.39-834.52][S21] because my feeling is they're living it.[834.55-836.84][S21] The teachers, the students, they're the ones living it.[836.87-838.72][S21] You know, I don't have to live the schedule[838.75-840.52][S21] the way the teachers and students do.[840.55-843.24][S21] So it's really nice that they come to us with that.[843.27-846.64][S21] And one of the things that this schedule allows us to do,[846.67-849.12][S21] that the one that we're living in right now doesn't allow us to do,[849.15-852.04][S21] is to do something that I've been talking about for years[852.07-853.72][S21] called internships.[853.75-857.36][S21] And we are going to pilot a few internships,[857.39-861.84][S21] both internally in our school next year and externally.[861.87-865.72][S21] So we have created a class called Internship[865.75-870.24][S21] that students who will be allowed to take with my permission,[870.27-872.84][S21] so they have to come, they have to get teacher permission,[872.87-877.24][S21] that we are piloting in some of our sub-separate special education classrooms.[877.27-883.44][S21] So there are students that are looking to go into different careers[883.47-885.36][S21] in education, culinary, things[885.39-889.24][S21] that our transition program and our sub-separate classrooms do.[889.27-891.72][S21] And we did this at a really small scale this year.[891.75-894.24][S21] We were adding a few students next year.[894.27-897.24][S21] So they'll be able to take that class as past fail next year.[897.27-898.24][S21] They'll get credits.[898.27-900.84][S21] They will actually get a class failed grade[900.87-903.60][S21] and receive credits for that class.[903.63-906.72][S21] We are also piloting this hot off the presses.[906.75-909.84][S21] I actually have my second meeting tomorrow with Chief Barrows.[909.87-912.00][S21] We're piloting with the Fulmer of the Fulmer,[912.03-914.36][S21] the Somerset Fire Department.[914.39-918.24][S21] And they are looking to have a few of our students participate[918.27-920.36][S21] in internship with them next year.[920.39-923.84][S21] And what those students will be able to do in this schedule[923.87-925.64][S21] is get outside of the building[925.67-927.84][S21] because if you look at the schedule,[927.87-930.84][S21] if you look at periods E and F in particular,[930.87-934.84][S21] periods E and F meet at the end of the day on Monday[934.87-936.44][S21] for the last two periods of the day.[936.47-941.52][S21] So from 11:00 to the end of the day, students can get out into internships.[941.55-943.60][S21] Tuesday, it's the first thing in the morning.[943.63-946.24][S21] So first thing in the morning all the way until 9:15,[946.27-948.84][S21] again, another two-hour chunk.[948.87-951.44][S21] Wednesday, at 12:30, they can get out[951.47-953.00][S21] and then go through the Raider Block.[953.03-955.00][S21] So again, at the end of the day.[955.03-956.64][S21] Thursday, it's in the middle of the day,[956.67-958.60][S21] but it's still a really good chunk of time[958.63-961.36][S21] because it's from 10:13 all the way to 1:00.[961.39-963.04][S21] So there's two opportunities here[963.07-965.72][S21] that could either, in the case of the fire department,[965.75-967.12][S21] they literally are right over there.[967.15-969.44][S21] They can get there, get back for their next class.[969.47-972.24][S21] But we're also thinking in terms of capstone experiences[972.27-972.92][S21] and things like that.[972.95-976.44][S21] That's what they can be with their internal teacher or advisor[976.47-978.64][S21] and that can be kind of their coursework[978.67-982.00][S21] when they're planning their project and their research and all that.[982.03-983.84][S21] And then Friday, again, it's kind of short,[983.87-985.52][S21] but it is that first block of the day.[985.55-990.36][S21] So they can come in late and perhaps participate in an internship there.[990.39-994.00][S21] So this is our trial here.[994.03-997.00][S21] We're going to try this out with a small cohort of students,[997.03-999.64][S21] see what works, what doesn't work.[999.67-1002.84][S21] And then we hope to be back next year,[1002.87-1004.92][S21] same time, same channel,[1004.95-1007.72][S21] but talking a little bit about what worked, what didn't work,[1007.75-1011.52][S21] and how we're going to move forward with that.[1011.55-1018.24][S21] So that is, in a nutshell, what is happening with the schedule next year.[1018.27-1022.52][S21] Again, they weren't major changes, nothing major,[1022.55-1025.52][S21] but where it is a little bit of a change[1025.55-1027.52][S21] and it will be coming out in the newsletter[1027.55-1030.16][S21] and Aspen, I certainly wanted to bring it to all of you first[1030.19-1033.83][S21] before we started doing the break month, so.[1036.16-1036.92][S12] I have one question.[1036.95-1040.35][S12] How many students do you think would be in the internship?[1040.39-1041.44][S21] With the fire department?[1041.47-1042.16][S21] Who's looking?[1042.19-1043.92][S12] In general, for like this trial.[1043.95-1045.64][S21] Right now, I'm looking at[1045.67-1048.35][S21] I know that there is less than 10 right now.[1048.39-1050.24][S21] We'd be willing to go up higher than that[1050.27-1052.64][S21] if there were other students that came to us with opportunities.[1052.67-1054.24][S21] This is, again, this is another reason[1054.27-1057.16][S21] why I came and wanted the graduation requirements changed[1057.19-1060.64][S21] because now you can take in your senior year, for example,[1060.67-1063.72][S21] at least those two periods of internship[1063.75-1065.64][S21] and that will go towards your credits[1065.67-1070.64][S21] instead of being kind of pigeonholed into those elected graduation requirements.[1070.67-1072.44][S21] This can now be your elect.[1072.47-1074.72][S21] This can also parlay into,[1074.75-1077.52][S21] you know, we don't have our students yet in capstone yet.[1077.55-1080.72][S21] We might have some students that can take a capstone project[1080.75-1084.64][S21] and parlay that into an internship with these two periods as well[1084.67-1087.24][S21] as long as they haven't been standing and ready to graduate.[1087.27-1090.59][S21] So there's a lot of moving parts with this,[1090.63-1094.83][S21] but we're hoping now that this is all set and ready to go[1094.87-1096.83][S21] that it will grow as time goes on.[1096.87-1099.24][S12] And you would typically be upperclassmen?[1099.27-1102.83][S21] You were targeting the upperclassmen, yes.[1106.16-1111.59][S15] How have these schedule, these schedule changes[1111.63-1115.44][S15] facilitate more dual enrollment for early college[1115.47-1120.83][S15] as those opportunities hopefully grow in the future for our students?[1120.87-1123.72][S21] So in the same vein, I mean, instead of internship,[1123.75-1126.59][S21] those are periods that allow for dual enrollment.[1126.63-1128.83][S21] We struggle a little bit right now with the dual enrollment[1128.87-1132.72][S21] in terms of when their classes meet versus when our classes meet.[1132.75-1136.44][S21] But where you're looking at good two-hour chunks of time,[1136.47-1139.64][S21] I'm hoping that we can kind of pair some of the experiences,[1139.67-1143.44][S21] especially we've been working pretty diligently with BCC,[1143.47-1146.83][S21] hoping to partner with them.[1146.87-1152.35][S21] But again, I'm hoping that this time and this internship period,[1152.39-1153.83][S21] we're calling it internship right now?[1153.87-1156.44][S21] We could call it internship slash dual enrollment.[1156.47-1159.08][S21] It doesn't, you know, it doesn't have to be internship.[1159.11-1163.24][S21] It's kind of one of those things where if a student comes,[1163.27-1165.83][S21] this is a class that we will kind of say,[1165.87-1169.35][S21] yes, this is a time when you can choose your own adventure[1169.39-1172.83][S21] and create your own experience.[1173.24-1174.16][S01] Any other questions?[1174.19-1176.16][S11] I just have one, not really a question,[1176.19-1178.92][S11] more of a comment.[1178.95-1182.59][S11] Didn't we have lunch before 10:30 once before[1182.63-1185.44][S11] and students kind of?[1185.47-1188.72][S11] I just remember reading about something about students[1188.75-1190.00][S11] weren't happy about having lunch.[1190.03-1193.35][S21] So lunches start before 10:30 on half-days.[1193.39-1193.83][S11] On half-days.[1193.87-1196.59][S21] On half-days, that's the only way we can get the four lunches in[1196.63-1199.64][S21] and everybody out of here by 11:30.[1199.67-1201.64][S21] They're better answer that question than I am,[1201.67-1205.83][S21] but I'm not sure that students are crazy about lunch at 9:30.[1205.87-1209.24][S21] Mr. Morrissey, I think, does try sometimes to do the breakfast-lunch options.[1209.27-1210.08][S18] Yeah, he's usually like that.[1210.11-1211.44][S18] It's usually like French toast[1211.47-1214.44][S18] or mini pancakes if we're on half-days at least.[1214.47-1214.83][S11] All right.[1214.87-1216.83][S11] Because I'm just concerned about the Wednesday[1216.87-1221.44][S11] being having students, you know, the first lunch is at 10:27.[1221.47-1223.24][S21] That's what it is on Fridays.[1223.27-1223.83][S11] Is it?[1223.87-1225.44][S11] Okay, maybe that's what I read.[1225.47-1227.83][S21] It's the same.[1229.83-1231.44][S01] Question to comment?[1231.47-1233.44][S22] I just, it's like good work.[1233.47-1237.11][S22] I'm going to tell the scheduling committee, it's not easy to[1237.15-1239.00][S22] with a rotating, dropping schedule.[1239.03-1241.64][S22] It's quite a challenge to get those chunks of time[1241.67-1244.44][S22] to allow for things like internship and dual enrollment.[1244.47-1246.44][S22] But you get a nice little opportunity, maybe[1246.47-1248.83][S22] in like the Monday, Wednesday afternoon space[1248.87-1250.64][S22] and a lot of college classes will need,[1250.67-1253.83][S22] but you know, dual enrollment, you could do twice.[1253.87-1258.24][S22] So it's very, it's not easy to do.[1258.27-1262.83][S22] Good work and we'll see how it works out.[1262.87-1263.35][S12] If I could just pull you back[1263.39-1266.92][S12] on Dr. Bresser's comments about the internship.[1266.95-1271.59][S12] We had, two Fridays ago, we had an event here.[1271.63-1273.92][S12] It was Future Teachers Signing Day.[1273.95-1276.64][S12] So we celebrated, I don't know, 10 students[1276.67-1280.83][S12] who are going into education next year, 10 seniors.[1280.87-1283.83][S12] And two of the students who participated[1283.87-1287.00][S12] actually participated in internships this year.[1287.03-1289.24][S12] One student was in preschool[1289.27-1292.44][S12] and another student was in elementary class.[1292.47-1296.24][S12] And each of the 10 students spoke about,[1296.27-1297.35][S12] they recognized a teacher.[1297.39-1300.24][S12] So we had it on the Friday Teacher Appreciation Move.[1300.27-1302.83][S12] So it was just a really nice event.[1302.87-1307.64][S12] But the two students spoke so highly of their internship experience[1307.67-1309.83][S12] and how valuable that was to them[1309.87-1314.64][S12] and helping them decide what direction to wind up in the future.[1314.67-1316.16][S12] I want to add that.[1316.19-1317.52][S12] Commissioner Riley, I'm sorry.[1317.55-1319.04][S21] It was a paid internship too.[1319.07-1324.04][S12] Yes, through Bristol, Masaya Bristol.[1324.07-1325.24][S21] The Masaya workforce.[1325.27-1327.83][S12] Yeah.[1327.87-1330.83][S12] And Commissioner Riley came down for that event too.[1330.87-1333.04][S12] Just, he accepted my invitation to come[1333.07-1334.64][S12] and he spoke to the students again.[1334.67-1336.24][S12] So it was a really great ceremony,[1336.27-1338.92][S12] but I just wanted to highlight the internship there[1338.95-1343.83][S12] and which we obviously hope to continue that next year too.[1344.83-1347.04][S01] Any other questions to comment?[1347.07-1349.52][S01] In that case, I entertain a motion to approve the changes[1349.55-1352.83][S01] to the high school schedule as proposed by Dr. Bresser.[1352.87-1354.44][S12] Second.[1354.47-1356.24][S01] Motion by Ms. Ramos-Gagliardi,[1356.27-1358.04][S01] seconded by Mr. Fensdemaker.[1358.07-1359.44][S01] Any further discussion?[1359.47-1362.24][S11] One touchy.[1362.27-1363.52][S11] Has, how's the STA?[1363.55-1367.35][S11] Did the STA quote this?[1367.39-1371.44][S21] The STA was party.[1371.47-1373.83][S21] There's no changes. They really.[1373.87-1374.52][S11] Just.[1374.55-1377.83][S21] Yeah, there were no changes.[1377.87-1379.83][S01] Any other discussion?[1379.87-1383.16][S01] And here are none. I'll take a vote. All those in favor?[1383.19-1383.83][S14] Aye.[1383.87-1384.35][S01] Aye?[1384.39-1387.44][S01] Opposed? So voted.[1387.47-1388.04][S21] Thank you.[1388.07-1391.83][S21] Thank you.[1392.83-1399.83][S01] And then the next item on the agenda is the 23-24 School Calendar Revision.[1400.04-1405.83][S12] Yes, Ms. Andrews, this is really a more housekeeping item.[1405.87-1408.83][S12] The Parent Teacher Conference was originally scheduled[1408.87-1414.24][S12] in the calendar approved at the last meeting for Thursday, October 19th.[1414.27-1419.64][S12] But that actually happens to be a day where we have a lot of teachers[1419.67-1421.52][S12] go to the MasQ conference.[1421.55-1424.36][S12] We send a large number of teachers there every year.[1424.39-1428.64][S12] And because of the way that we structure our parent teacher conferences,[1428.67-1430.24][S12] it's an early release day for students[1430.27-1433.24][S12] and we have an afternoon session, then an evening session.[1433.27-1438.52][S12] And by doing so, we would really limit the participation[1438.55-1441.24][S12] of Somerset Berkeley teachers going to that conference.[1441.27-1443.44][S12] That's already been phoned to.[1443.47-1446.44][S12] So then we were looking to have it changed to October 12th,[1446.47-1449.83][S12] but that conflicts with Music Town.[1449.87-1452.16][S12] I think the ball is that night.[1452.19-1456.83][S12] So the proposal for the year is to have it on Tuesday, October 17th,[1456.87-1459.83][S12] just the same way that we're structuring it on Thursday, the 19th,[1459.87-1463.83][S12] but the early release day's still occurring on Friday, the 20th.[1468.44-1471.83][S01] Are there any questions?[1472.83-1475.04][S15] I was friends with people unhappy it's changing[1475.07-1476.83][S15] because it was concert the 12th.[1476.87-1477.83][S12] Oh, it was a concert, okay.[1477.87-1480.04][S15] And it's in a long time here, so.[1480.07-1483.83][S15] What do you do this year, Tuesday?[1487.83-1492.83][S01] The new day is Tuesday, October 17th.[1495.24-1497.24][S15] I also just wanted to point out[1497.27-1501.64][S15] that I appreciate the addition of the sort of the major holidays noted here.[1501.67-1504.83][S15] So I thank you for that.[1506.24-1508.64][S01] Any other questions to comment?[1508.67-1511.92][S01] If there are none, I will entertain a motion to approve the revisions[1511.95-1516.24][S01] to the 2023-2024 School Calendar as presented.[1518.24-1520.24][S01] Any discussion?[1520.27-1522.04][S01] I have a motion by Ms. Ramos-Gagliardi,[1522.07-1523.64][S01] and seconded by Mr. Fensdemaker.[1523.67-1524.83][S01] All those in favor?[1524.87-1525.52][S14] Aye.[1525.55-1526.83][S01] Opposed?[1526.87-1529.83][S01] So voted.[1532.83-1536.83][S01] Next on the agenda, moving into new business.[1536.87-1540.83][S01] We have a citation[1540.87-1545.83][S01] for our student representative, Abby O'Brien.[1548.16-1551.24][S01] At a meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee[1551.27-1555.44][S01] on May 23rd, 2023, a citation was prepared,[1555.47-1559.36][S01] signed by members of the committee, and voted and described in the permanent record.[1559.39-1562.64][S01] Whereas Abby O'Brien served as student representative[1562.67-1565.36][S01] in the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District[1565.39-1568.72][S01] and whereas she faithfully and conscientiously performed her duties[1568.75-1572.36][S01] on behalf of the students at Somerset Berkeley Regional High School[1572.39-1575.36][S01] while providing the committee with the student perspective[1575.39-1578.64][S01] and whereas she was instrumental in informing the committee[1578.67-1581.24][S01] of student activities and upcoming events[1581.27-1583.36][S01] at Somerset Berkeley Regional High School[1583.39-1585.52][S01] as well as helping the committee better understand[1585.55-1588.44][S01] the needs and concerns of the student body.[1588.47-1592.83][S01] Whereas her talents and commitments have brought her academic success[1592.87-1595.36][S01] and a leadership role among her peers[1595.39-1599.83][S01] culminating in her admission to the prestigious Princeton University.[1599.87-1602.44][S01] And be it hereby resolved[1602.47-1605.64][S01] that the members of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee[1605.67-1608.36][S01] commend Abby O'Brien in the official minutes[1608.39-1612.24][S01] reporting this expression of appreciation and gratitude[1612.27-1615.72][S01] to a student member of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee[1615.75-1619.44][S01] and extending best wishes for happiness and success[1619.47-1624.64][S01] in all her future educational and career endeavors.[1624.67-1629.83][S01] I would entertain a motion to adopt the citation as prepared for Abby O'Brien.[1631.24-1633.24][S01] Second, I have a motion by Mr. Fensdemaker[1633.27-1635.83][S01] and seconded by Ms. Ramos-Gagliardi.[1635.87-1639.44][S01] Any discussion?[1639.47-1644.04][S20] Just to say thank you again for bringing such professionalism[1644.07-1648.92][S20] to your role on this committee and for being very candid[1648.95-1653.83][S20] in representing what your fellow students had concerns about[1653.87-1656.24][S20] and what they wanted us to know.[1656.27-1661.44][S20] So we really appreciate everything that you've contributed.[1661.47-1662.36][S11] If I could just add,[1662.39-1666.83][S11] you know, the first time I actually met Abby was when she was a seventh grader[1666.87-1669.83][S11] and she was windy in the Peter Pan.[1669.87-1674.52][S11] And I literally had, you know, just watched her either through sports[1674.55-1677.36][S11] or, you know, her mom on Facebook or whatever.[1677.39-1682.83][S11] And, you know, you are what we want from every student.[1682.87-1685.52][S11] You know, honestly, you advocate for your students.[1685.55-1687.04][S11] You stand up.[1687.07-1690.36][S11] You're, you know, you're never shy to tell your opinion[1690.39-1692.24][S11] and I think that's what we want from our students[1692.27-1694.83][S11] and that's what I'm looking for Ryan and Allison[1694.87-1697.52][S11] to come in and really take that over.[1697.55-1700.52][S11] But, you know, we're very fortunate.[1700.55-1705.52][S11] You, it seems like every student rep every year makes it better.[1705.55-1709.16][S11] You know, it seems like you learn from the people before you[1709.19-1710.83][S11] and just make it grow and grow.[1710.87-1714.83][S11] So it's just been great to see you, not only from[1714.87-1717.64][S11] in this particular role, but actually seeing your career grow[1717.67-1720.92][S11] from middle school all the way to here.[1720.95-1723.83][S11] And lots of luck in Princeton.[1728.16-1731.83][S01] I think we ought to take a picture.[1731.87-1735.04][S01] Do we do it now?[1735.07-1736.04][S01] Did you sign that?[1736.07-1737.44][S11] I did.[1737.47-1739.83][S11] It might have slipped.[1739.87-1740.83][S01] Yeah?[1740.87-1741.83][S15] No?[1741.87-1744.83][S15] Are you standing behind us?[1747.83-1748.52][S15] Or just you?[1748.55-1749.83][S21] I know, it doesn't need to be me.[1749.87-1751.83][S21] We'll figure this out. Come on.[1754.24-1757.83][S11] Kelly can sign it.[1759.83-1763.83][S21] Come on over here. We're going to do this right.[1772.64-1776.83][S11] The furthest one away is the master's book.[1777.16-1778.36][S23] I didn't go.[1778.39-1780.24][S23] No, I wish I did.[1780.27-1781.83][S23] I really wish I did.[1781.87-1785.16][S23] I had my friend get me a T-shirt because I was so sad that I didn't go.[1785.19-1787.83][S24] I'm sorry.[1787.87-1789.36][S23] It's okay. It's okay.[1789.39-1791.83][S24] But you go to Princeton, so.[1794.16-1796.36][S23] Okay, when she gets home from work.[1796.39-1798.83][S01] There we go.
Is she excited?
Do you want Justin to fire herself?
Well, Justin's.
I, I just liked how Jen said, please stand this side. This must be this side.
I'm gonna send her an extra grab party invite. See if she's something back.
While we're on the topic of, um, recognizing our students, I think we would be remiss if we did not recognize the young man behind the camera. Jeffrey Lo Priore has, uh, videotaped more than forty hours, probably feels like four hundred hours. We do apologize for that.
Guys, just turn your jobs.
Um, but you, you're, um, performing a really important public service and, you know, folks don't come here in person, but it's important that these meetings are available to everyone to be able to view. And, um, you know, we're not the most exciting crowd, um, but we really appreciate all the work that you've done and, um, we wish you the best and thank you.
Thank you very much.
Jeffrey's heading to Bridgewater to study film making.
Go Bears. Oh, you get the BS.
I even got my shirt on.
Just there today. It's beautiful on.
Oh, yeah, you did my on the photo shoot?
So, yes, were you, were you there too?
I wasn't.
Yeah, it was, it was great. Everything's in blue. Lots of beautiful new stuff at Bridgewater. It looks fabulous, so. Alright, well, remember us when you're winning an Oscar. You're at home.
I was, this, this is my resume right here.
Oh, I, I hope not. We look forward to your Scorsese adventures. Alright. We're all in a good mood. Let's keep this going. The next item on the agenda is a citation for Kathleen Michael. She's not here. Okay. Well, we're gonna read it anyway. Um, Catherine is one of our paraprofessionals who is retiring. And here's her citation. So at a meeting of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee on May twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, a citation was prepared and signed by members of the committee and voted inscribed in the permanent records. Whereas Kathleen Michael served as a paraprofessional for the Somerset Public Schools and Somerset Berkeley Regional School District for the past fifteen years. And whereas she faithfully and conscientiously performed her duties on behalf of the students at Chase Street School, Somerset Middle School, and Somerset Berkeley Regional High School, an individual with integrity and high standards, who always put the needs of her students first. And whereas she fulfilled her duties with the utmost attention to detail and a steadfast commitment to excellence, earning the respect of colleagues, parents, and students, and always maintaining the highest standards of education. And be it hereby resolved that the members of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School Committee commend Kathleen Michael in the official minutes, recording this expression of appreciation and gratitude to an honored professional of the Somerset Berkeley Regional School District, and extending best wishes for happiness in her retirement years. I would entertain a motion to adopt the citation as prepared for Kathleen Michael. Kidney? A motion by Mr. Fenstermaker, seconded by Ms. Ferreras. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the OFEP Subcommittee update.
So we do have a meeting scheduled, uh, coming up to, um, we have a meeting scheduled for, um, I think, maybe a lesson.
Tuesday.
Tuesday. Um, to look over, uh, getting an update from Mass Prin. But I'm trying to look at the notes. I believe that they have, um, Mass Prin has required that we adopt their industrial files. And so just to give the committee a heads up, we will be needing to go over that. We have planned to have Mass Prin here at this meeting to give us an overview of how the funding has done so far and what, um, their next steps are. Uh, they weren't even meeting, so we're going to go after our next OFEP. Just. I don't have it here, no.
Okay, thank you. The next item on the agenda is Subcommittee assignments. So it's really an informational item for tonight. What we can do is I can ask Rob and we can circulate a, on a Google form, um, with options. Maybe we can include one in there if you wanna keep it as, keep things as they are, we could do that, or make whatever changes. And then if folks could just respond to that in time so that we can, um, issue assignments at the June twentieth meeting. Next item on the agenda is summer meeting dates. I believe last year we did not hold the meeting in July. I think that's a big trend. So up for discussion, the wishes of the committee if we wanna hold a meeting in July or if we want to, um, suspend that, and if you, you need to decide if you wanna have one or two meetings in August. And also if you wanna think about a summer retreat, but we can at least begin that conversation now.
Now Chair, regarding July or summer meetings, I'm going actually, I know we usually set some meetings up, and then it comes to the, like, a, almost a meeting that we really don't need. So I would recommend, uh, to leave it at your discretion and superintendent's, like, if there is a need for one, you know, just send a, do a poll at that time and we all pick a date and the majority will attend that meeting. That would be my recommendation, and it's funny how you mentioned workshop, because I actually had it on my list to ask today. I really felt that the winter workshop, uh, was a much, was easier. I felt that, um, I really enjoyed it. You know, I, I will attend the summer one, but summers are usually tough for me. And, uh, I, you know, I think this year everyone attended except me, one member, I thought it was a good turnout. Administration was here, so I don't know if that's something that you would consider, or the committee would consider either a fall or winter workshop again, because I thought that was, you know, was, was doing anything in the wintertime, you know? So that's just my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I think that that would be fine, especially to do it in, if you put early winter or late fall. Um, it gives us, at that, we, we typically will work out what our goals are, review key topics that the administration might want to share with us, so do you think that would work?
Yes.
Yeah, I would agree with you about that. I mean, you got the summer, I thought. To just focus on the things we actually have to, that would be a good thing.
And then, and then, I don't know, if we do it on a weekend during the, uh, early fall or, or early winter, whatever the case may be. If it's possible, if we do on a weekend, could we do a two-hour pre-workshop with the K eights? Not so much, just so we know where, you know, like, one of the things where, when we were doing that redistricting, I mean, the, uh, planning committee for, you know, we were, we learned a lot from our principals where a lot of our staff in the middle school are working well with our high school. There was a lot of collaboration going on that we weren't even aware, even with Berkeley and, you know, so if it's possible, even maybe just have something, or maybe it's a special day, a different time, but it would probably be nice to, for us to actually see how both, all three districts are actually working together in the common goal. So I don't know, but I will let that stay with that committee as well.
Yeah, and they could even make a presentation maybe at the start of, um, of the workshop, just for the table if you want, for future discussion. So maybe through our work, if they can, I think that I, so, um, Chair, in the past, we've asked committee members to kind of forward to the committee tu- key topics that they might wanna include in that. We, even though we're not having it in the summer, we could already get some thought to think about that. So we have to forward those to Robin and she can start that. List for us?
I agree since, especially since we don't have new, new members, so I don't think we need to have a an orientation type of routine. Um, so, um, just Mr. Sven or Mr. Tarot, um, sure you don't need us in July. Is there anything in terms of August where you're feeling like? And we can revisit this in June as well, if we wanna sort of think about it a little bit, um.
Well, the only.
If you need action from us.
Students, well, should say, our staff reports back on August twenty-eighth. So usually right around that time, or might be the end of the week before, when it's the twenty-third, Thursday, the twenty-fourth, is when there typically would be a school committee meeting with the building inspections that occur at that point. Uh, whether or not there's, we'd be need for another meeting potentially earlier, I don't know. I think we said there was last August, if I'm not mistaken. Were there any pressing matters from your end that you need to call?
Thinking not right now, like, there's, there's nothing pressing that we require, or it, something may come up, but right now I can't.
So if I'm gonna, I just, we could delay those just for the committee, so we are not gonna schedule a July meeting. Right now, we're not gonna schedule an August meeting, but we'll keep in mind that we're likely to have it from mid, mid to late August for the building inspection and any other issues that arise and, and as things arise, if you like, snow will. We will be on board anyway. And I believe we get some sunshine and sunrise, especially the folks on the sun. It's fascinating, very, all your love. The next item on the agenda, um, under unfinished business is, uh, talking about Thanksgiving football game.
Okay, uh, so I, I will turn this over to Dr. Bresser. Uh, Mr. Francis wasn't able to be here this evening, but I, I know that, uh, they spoke and she can give an update on what Mr. Francis has, uh, pulled her, on his efforts as well as what Dr. Bresser is doing with students. Because I think, it doesn't say it, but along with Thanksgiving, the Thanksgiving game is also the accompanying rally, which is also, you know, so important to, uh, to our students, like, Dr. Bresser.
So Mr. Francis, I have to say, has really tried, he's done his due diligence. Um, it is, it is not looking good to find someone to play for the upcoming Thanksgiving game in terms of a, of a team in Massachusetts, who've gone from Massachusetts to Rhode Island. It, it, it just kinda seems like if people are playing on Thanksgiving, they're playing, and if they're not playing on Thanksgiving, it's because they don't wanna play on Thanksgiving. So we met with the Student Advisory Council a few weeks ago now, and they had some ideas. I just sent an email out to our student council, asking for a proposal by the end of the year in terms of their ideas for how they'd like to move forward. Some ideas that have been on the table are taking the Powerpuff game and moving it to Thanksgiving. Uh, perhaps having some type of alumni game where the football team plays alumni. Talk about insurance on that.
Fly football.
Um, there was talk about just taking the football team, split them in half and doing some kind of scrimmage game. You know, something like that. So it's not that we wanna, we don't wanna abandon the idea of doing something on Thanksgiving. Those were the ideas that I know that were floated, and then taking that and incorporating that into the skits. I think the students are very clear that they don't wanna lose the rally. And that the skits are the most important part of the rally. However, we wanna do something, I mean, we recognize that this year, the, the jokes and everything might, might still be apropos for what we do right now, but in years to come, we wanna kind of create, okay, where are we going and what are we gonna do with this? And not lose that tradition, because that is something that, you know, not being a, an alum of Somerset High School, you can feel the culture of, of the rally here that is very special and very unique to these towns. So, you know, it, it's just, it's just very special and we don't wanna lose that for the students. And I think that's really, i- if you really pulled the student body as to what, what really, really matters, it's, it's that day. So we're gonna work really hard to make sure that that, that tradition continues as close to what we add as, as we can. So I've kind of challenged the students to, to give me some things, but what we don't wanna do is, is it get to be October and, and then rush to figure something out. So let's figure out what we're gonna do, and then we can start planning over the summer as we typically do, um, and move forward. So that's where we're going, and I think the students have some good ideas. It's always important to listen to the students. They know what they want, so. That's where we are.
Do you even add anything to that?
I, yeah, I definitely do think it's important for not only the students, but the Somerset and Berkeley community to have some type of rally, but still try to figure out what, what that should look like.
The big thing we had talked about is the idea that, like, the rally, um, and the skits themselves are kind of focused right now on, like, Case is the bad guy, Somerset's the good guy, and that's kind of how we, we frame it every year. So it's not about getting rid of the skits, but it's more just like re, how the students in the future can reframe those skits and come up with a new way to, uh, kind of, whatever we decide, they decide to do on, um, Thanksgiving, how we can, how they can take, you know, those skits and focus it on that, rather than, you know, the good guy, bad guy kind of theme that goes on currently.
And what I really like over the past few years especially is, I mean, in particular, shout out to the senior classes. I mean, you guys are making us cry every year now. I mean, it's not so much funny as, yeah, it's, you know, the ending of it is really nostalgic, so. It, it's been really nice, and I think that is what we're gonna use to move to the future. We ran tears, but she.
Ms. Chata?
Yeah, I, I was thinking about this when I started on the agenda, when I asked about it, to be honest, agenda. I was thinking, you know, if you didn't have a Thanksgiving, this might be a bad idea, but I always think of the August stuff movie, um, with Burt Reynolds, uh, where the inmates go against the, uh, the correction officers and all of that. And I, you know, I'm always thinking, what a great opportunity having the, the football coaches coach our staff to play against the students. You know, this way you can have like a teacher, you know, for a prom, you know, like case rally, but more of a, you know, good guys, bad guys type of thing. But this is a, you know, I'm just thinking, I would love to see our staff play, I would be playing flag football, but I'm not playing tackle, that's my hips. But I'm just thinking it's, it would be interesting to see, uh, you know, the coach actually teach our staff players to play flag football against their actual students. But again, I don't know how the insurance would be, but, you know, just something like, you know, because that was the first thing that I thought was the longest yawn of that movie, so. I hope, I, I have faith that this school will do something, uh, and, but will be entertaining.
Thank you. Thank you for the update. The next item on the agenda is the DECA registration fee. Just as a reminder for some context, this is on the agenda because of our, at our last meeting in April before we leave this committee, we approved, um, a, a trip, uh, for students to attend the HOSA FHP International Leadership Conference in Dallas. And we also, at that time, made moves to, um, pay for the registration fee for those students, which raised the question of then should we, um, go back and look at the, uh, DECA registration fee for the international conference in April? So the. So, the registration fee, um, for, there were two students who attended that conference in April. The registration fee was a hundred and seventy-five dollars each. Um, and so, it's on the agenda, so we can consider, um, a refund to those two students of that registration fee for the operating budget. Just to see if that, so. I'll make a motion that we, that school committee authorize refund of five hundred dollar reg- registration fee fee. Hundred and seven, hundred and seven, sorry. Hundred and seventy-five registr- registration fee to the students who attended the DECA conference. No issue.
Second.
A motion and a second, if there are any discussion.
What I'll do is I'll just verify, I think, um, just prove that they, they may pay it, it will be worth it. I think the other way around, I think we'll pay a fee before they work, so, for consistency, we should make sure that. I'll contact our work, the teacher, to just get that confirmation. It was two students.
Um, so we have a motion, I'm sorry, I lost track, do we have a second? So, that's, motion by Ms. Ramus Gagliardi, a second, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted.
And Madam Chair, I just wanted to note that both Brian and Alan will be going to the host of conference in Dallas, so they'll be able to come back.
Oh, that's you.
There are two of the students attended that one. So, we'll get a report firsthand, uh, I guess, when is that, in June, late June?
June twenty-third.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, the next item on the agenda under budget and financial, um, with the, um, committee's permission, I'd like to take these items out of order, and, um, if we could first consider the April financial statement.
So, I think I can just kick that off.
Mr. Tarot, should.
Talk about some of the areas of us, is some, there's some seri- areas of savings, there's areas of hope, there's, um, the bottom line is we'll be within budget, uh, projected out, uh, we're looking at using some prepayment of added district tuition, as I mentioned, somewhere near two hundred thousand. By doing that, um, it'll reduce the amount available in the financials. If you look at the financials, uh, this is April, so it's one month behind right now. Uh, we still have debt service paying principal interest of our four hundred and twenty-five thousand, let's come off the bottom of that. After we do that, and after we do some prepayments, we'll complete our, uh, salary projections for the end of the year. We have kind of our last checks. Probably have a little bit of money left in the account. I'm looking at correcting a couple of replacements on the Austin City area, uh, for, for the high school campus. Some things that are a little bit older that need to be replaced. So, once I can confirm what equipment's available, so you can get it before June thirtieth, then that'll give you some flexibility on what we can transfer over to, uh, the OPEC fund. Put a placehold over there for, um, not to exceed, and that's where my projections are looking at, three hundred and fifty thousand. Again, one more, there's, there's a couple of things Mr. Scooner wants me to address. I'll see if I can address those from a facility standpoint. Before then, we, for the water hydration station, we want to put a cafeteria, um, uh, he wants them to put a couple of speed bumps in the area to slow traffic a little bit, 'cause I think that's been a somewhat a safety concern. So, I probably contacted, uh, our pavement contractor to see if we can do that pretty quick. Not a major issue, but I'm not sure if we have to cut through the asphalt. So, we'll work on that, and depending on when those numbers come in, then I'll be able to flexibility to transfer money to the OPEC fund.
So, so this will be a, a second major contribution?
Within this fiscal year, correct. I think we did a hundred and sixty, hundred and seventy thousand. And it's not necessarily a transfer, basically, I'm, I'm requesting your approval.
Right.
And that's just what's gonna happen, it'll all overspend that line.
Right, okay.
So, that's, the true, we'll make the transfer, but you'll see an expenditure out of that line when we exceed that budget.
So, budget remains as it is, you haven't
That's correct.
You haven't changed it, but your, the transfer will be to that.
And it'll be in maybe before June thirtieth, so it'll show up in the actual OPEC report, that's a seventy-four, seventy-five, the end of the year.
Because we did make a, a major contribution
Last year.
Last year, right.
That was another three hundred, three hundred and fifty thousand as well, so.
So, this would be very much in line with what our, um, conference had recommended we start doing, we wanted to show our position there, so. As long as, I mean, I, I think that that's a great move if we can do it, but I, I would just, as much as I certainly have trust, I think it would be good that we make sure we check up all the other boxes of the things that we might need to use that money.
Oh, ab- absolutely, we can, we've tried to get a lot done with any of the technology, the buildings, to replace this, everything, to build, to build facilities. Anything we can, we spent a lot of money there for, baseball field, doing some old work, and the softball field is not completed yet. We're looking at the outfield for, for the baseball, the softball field. That's a little bit bigger project that has to go up a bit, so. We're, we're focusing not just on putting money to the OPEC fund, but what we can do with the facilities and what comes up as, as the year goes on.
Is that something you could have like a little summary of again? Are you moving on around?
Yeah, what I, what I wanna do is you'll get a, uh, a budget transfer, but I can give you a summary of the pluses and minuses within the item, the FinStat. Yeah, absolutely. I, I'll pick the major line items within this, within this FinStat. I'll, if you don't mind, let me wait till May is completed, and I'll give you a, I'll give you a snapshot of May and the projection for, and to be a salvage when we're completed by then too.
Any other questions? In that case, then I would entertain a motion to transfer up to three hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the operating budget to the other post-employment benefits fund at the recommendation of the Director of Business and Finance.
So.
Second. Motion by Mr. Mashado, seconded by Ms. Ramus Gagliardi, is ready for the discussion? And then we'll take the vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. The next item on the agenda under other matters and informational is the approval of a donation of eighteen thousand dollars to the Science Department for physics equipment from a McNamara winner. I think everyone had the, um, information about the equipment in the folder, and we're just, do you have to pause, we didn't wanna say something about?
So, we actually received the money today. Um, the committee came to the school, and if you take a trip up to the third floor outside of room three-ten, um, Mr. McNamara's famous quote, "It's all physics," has been nicely put up on the wall. It looks really, I mean, it looks beautiful, it looks like it's always been here. Uh, so we took some photos with, with the group, who was a lovely bunch of people to talk to today. Most of them are former educators themselves, and they were really, really happy. Um, Mrs. McNamara was there, uh, her daughter Emily was present, and then the committee, and Mr. Talbot received the money, and just in a nutshell, it will go towards improving and adding and enhancing our intro to physics courses, which all are freshman teak, and also, uh, some of our upper level physics courses as well. So, we'll be getting some new equipment using that money, so we, we certainly appreciate that donation, and you all watched the Sentinel, Mr. Austin was there, and all is already taking pictures, so you will see all those pictures very soon.
It's already this afternoon.
Oh, it's already, it's already there. There we are.
We love the McNamara's. Yeah, that's my phone. Uh, in that case, then I would entertain a motion to approve a donation of eighteen thousand dollars for the McNamara grant to the Science Department for the purchase of physics equipment. So moved. Motion by Ms. Ramus Gagliardi, seconded by Ms. Ferrera, any discussion? And then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. With thanks and gratitude to the McNamara's. Next item on the agenda, the Somerset and Berkeley college's updates. Mr. Mashado, you have an update for the session?
Sure, um, we had a, um, a report by our student representative, Benjamin Carbo. He spoke on topics about the upcoming DC trip, um, the Singing in the Rain, um, play that they had, uh, last week, which was excellent for those that were able to see it. Um, you know, the students did an excellent job on that. He also, we also presented him with a certificate for his services, uh, as our representative. We had our, we had the reading of our Student of the Month. We did speak about our town, uh, article regarding the windows, which unfortunately did not pass the town meeting, but we are gonna meet on at the end to find off, uh, some alternate funding. Um, we did talk about the, potentially adding another member to the building committee, another school committee member. No name has been presented yet, but, uh, it's either down to, um, Ms. Ferrera or Ms. Ashley, you know, we let them decide and let us know the next meeting. And, uh, pull some, you know, pull some months. Uh, we, we did talk about, we had a, um, we talked about our budget. It wasn't passed at that town meeting, as our budget here was passed at the town meeting, thanks to our taxpayers, um, for continuing to support our schools. We are, the chair asked for subcommittee assignments, uh, for those who want to participate. And we also had a building, uh, committee updates. Uh, if you drove by the middle school, you might see it's almost done, it's amazing. Next week, uh, the thirty-first, we're having our topping off ceremony, the very last beam is going up. Um, we had all of our middle school, uh, students and staff sign the beam, uh, last week, was it last week? Yep, um, so we have, well, six hundred people signing, even our superintendent, I think he's the superintendent of CGA, where he signed it on, I'm like, wait, he's not, but, uh, but it's, it's, it's nice to see the building going up in, uh, September of twenty-four, our kids are going in, so. That's it, like, you went there, so you don't know if I just did it.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I was.
Thank you, Mr. Mashado. Ms. Solomon, any updates from Berkeley?
Um, I don't have much, we've been, we've, I'm also on our building committee, so that's been kind of consuming a lot. We are full steam ahead with our feasibility, um, we are picking June twelfth, we're picking our, making our decision whether we're gonna do a repair or a rebuild. Community outreach, we're trying to get the word out on, where, I, I don't, I don't know where we're hoping to be, if we're, we're looking for that rebuild or, or a repair, but that's the discussion that's going on right now, June twelfth, that will be happening. That's kinda consuming everything in the face, so, yeah. Town meeting is, our town meeting is June fifth, so it's Monday.
All right, thank you, lots of building. Okay, the next item on the agenda is topics not anticipated by the chair, forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting.
Can I just, first of all, everyone is invited to graduation, your invitation is under the mail on June second, five o'clock on the football field. Green date will be June third, five o'clock on the football field. Pray for good weather. And also, you've all received the, um, this fundraiser, and I know we have thousands of people watching at home, so pay attention. On May thirty-first and June first of next week, we've partnered with Jersey Mike's in Somerset, and they have given us two thousand of these little cards. They are available in the main office, uh, for anybody in the community, in the school, students, parents, whoever, who's looking, uh, to go to Jersey Mike's. And for a minimum three dollar donation on either day at any point in time, uh, you get a regular sub with that minimum three dollar purchase, uh, which if you go to Jersey Mike's is a pretty good deal. Um, and one hundred percent of the profits from these cards comes to Somerset Berkeley, and will go towards our Kyler McGarry scholarship fund, so.
So, this, this entitles you to a three dollar sub?
Correct.
But those three dollars come to the
Yes.
Oh, wow.
Yes, so it's, in essence, free with a donation to Somerset Berkeley, the minimum donation that you can donate is three dollars, and if you wanna go, it's one per person per day, so if you wanna go two days, take two cards, you have plenty in there, you can stop buying the way up. Um, but, it's been lovely working with them, they're very nice, and show your support for Somerset Berkeley. You can pick them up right at the attendance, at school time, seven to two thirty.
That's all, I love it, yeah.
And that's a great scholarship, obviously, it's happening.
The only other item I have, I'll share with the committee, I'm in receipt of a letter from Donna Murphy, um, and the topic is regarding, uh, renaming. So, the committees, what I'd like to do is, uh, give this to Robin, have her share a copy with everyone else, and then perhaps refer it to the Policy Subcommittee for the first look, since I know that it involves policy issues.
Yeah, we have a, there is a, a naming policy.
Maybe just to do the initial check to see how it consorts with our policy, does that seem like a reasonable
Yeah.
Approach?
Yeah, you, I recall, uh, this is going back a while, a year and a half ago. Basically, that, once you receive the letter, the committee has X amount of days to form a subcommittee to look into whatever the, the naming is. And I think within forty-five days, it needs to be brought back to the committee for a gain or a makeover, something like that, so.
But then we collect and we probably put
Publicly, yeah.
So, maybe the, the policies and things that that will
All right, so we will do that. Have any other items? Action on for future meetings?
I have one thing, and I, I kind of apologize to Mr. Scooner because I didn't give him an advance notice, but one of the things that I feel like we're missing in our agendas these days, uh, both levels of district, the superintendent's report, you know, that's always something I always look forward to, because there are always something that you may know that we don't know. And I know, luckily, we have our memos that we send out, but I just feel like it's always valuable to have, um, that. And also, I would love for Ms. Haskell and the administration to give us an update. You know, 'cause we always hear it in the end cast, you know, results, how did the students do this year? You know, obviously, um, you know, probably even April or something, how, how did our students progress throughout the year? You know, that's always a great thing to know as well, so.
Anyone have anything else?
Question I had, and actually this came up, as I noted, someone posted a question for NASC, but then I recalled, I was on the Berkeley K to A school community, we would get regular updates about, um, personnel, like hires, transfers, resignations, retirements. I don't know if this committee has ever done that, I don't know if it's necessary, if the committee wishes to do that, but, it was just something that was sort of recently raised, and I don't know if there's an appetite for that or anything.
I mean, I think we had it usually at the start of the school year, like just as you're starting the school year to let us know what the, the vacant positions are.
It is a fairly common item that school committees have on their agendas to, whether it's approval, or I think so are, it's a rubber stamp approval or of sorts, but many districts have them. I've always, it's not something that we had here when I came, it's not anything that I initiated, but, um, I don't think historically, and Mr. Westeringer, who came a little back from, I don't know, you recall from May?
Your first, your first time at Somerset, if that was a standard item or not, but, uh, when I came, it wasn't a practice that was established.
I, I think it was typically like now, we're, we're having shorter, we're, so. One of the things I think about now, this time of year is how many retirees do that? And, and, and retirees and that, and, you know, and how it's funded for the covenants that, that is happening. I'm sure they have already given you notice for that, but kind of
I'm sure they have hardly given you notice for that, but kind of that, you know, you see the citation for, apparently, could we have any other people in time that are literally retiring in this? So, there's those are two, two folks, why don't you want to make sure you recognize the work we've done? And the second part is want to make sure you fund it for the six days in that may have been done. But I don't think we all have an ongoing, you know, or to.
We can add that item in districts that do it, it tends to be more of a part of a content agenda format along with minutes or whatever, donations and things like that.
Yeah, and are you thinking that in, it would be more of an informational piece? Could it be even part of a superintendent's report, or you're thinking of a separate agenda?
I can share with you, does it Berkley?
We do it, yes.
Yeah.
It's just, it's, it's under superintendent's reports and we have a folder like that we look through and there's reservations. I don't want to create more work, but I think sometimes it, you know, it's relevant to budget, it's relevant to retention, it's relevant to, you know, better to know that.
And over the past year, we've talked about high turnover with some positions, and that way you can be able to see exactly what that turnover looks like.
All right, so maybe in June seems like, you know, it's sort of an end of the, end of the fiscal year, start to wrap it up and then we can talk again in September because we're not going to reach.
Any other items? Great, we're over. The next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes of prior meetings. It looks out, everyone has them in the folder and the place has a chance to take a look at them. Does anyone want to pull one out for any changes? In that case, I would entertain a motion to approve the following minutes as presented, the open session of April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, the executive session of April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, the joint open session of May eleventh, twenty twenty-three, and the joint executive session of May eleventh, twenty twenty-three. So moved?
Second?
Your motion is by Ms. Ramos Gagliardi, seconded by Mr. Machado, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted.
I don't even know if this is an appropriate thing, but I did want to give you a heads up as we were mentioning again that our next meeting is June twentieth, then perhaps we will be part of the month, and then not be able to attend until the June twentieth.
The next item on the agenda is public input, is there any public input? In that case, pursuant to Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one, A seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal breathing aid requirements, consider release, reduction, or withholding of the April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three executive session minutes. Entertain a motion to enter into executive session for that specific.
Second?
Motion made by Mr. Machado, seconded by Ms. Ramos Gagliardi. We do one more, so. Ms. Solomon?
Aye.
Mr. Best, no question. Ms. Ramos Gagliardi?
Aye.
Ms. Ferrera?
Aye.
Mr. Machado?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The committee will return to open session. Again? Great, so the committee has returned to open session. The next item on the agenda under new business is the approval of the release of the April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three executive session minutes, so I would entertain a motion to release the April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three executive session minutes as presented with no reductions. So moved?
Second?
Motion made by Ms. Ramos Gagliardi, seconded by Mr. Machado, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. And then I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved?
Second?
Motion by Ms. Ramos Gagliardi, seconded by Mr. Machado, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so voted.